When I talked to the department, a few months back, we were wasting increased revenue, something that we could consider and it's not going to be a big money driver. Right now, village residents are allowed to fish in the reservoir, town residents aren't. We could have, if we wanted, to allow residents in the town or outside the village to purchase a fishing permit in front of the reservoir for a hundred bucks. It's not going to bring a whole lot of money, something to think about anyway.
A question came up, I don't remember if last year it came up.
Going down on the next page. Here's pretty much standard, we've got some other grants, some donations, police Walmart. There's mortgage tax on there, again, there's more state aid through the police programs. Consolidated highway aid, towards the bottom, three five oh one. That's the money that we got from New York State for paving every year. So that's when we could pave, we got money from the state and then we allocate that to the roads. So we're not really taking any money from the general fund to do our paving every year. If we want to do above and beyond what the state gives us, we could do that and budget it. Basically, you'll see eighty thousand there in highway aid, correlates to line item, makes your payment for an equal amount in the general fund budget coming down. General fund transfers, that's money that in the past may have been lent to the general fund, lent out from the general fund to pay for other funds. That's money that's being paid back. This year, there's not going to be much of that, pretty much everything is paid back right now. But I believe Sarah said there might be a few line items here or there that have to be paid back, but nothing too major. Any questions or anything so far? Board of trustees, personnel services. How much trustees get paid, there's also line for mayor. I think everyone will probably agree that maybe not that much, but I think that's something that's going to stay flat. I always ask the police federation of mayor, it's appreciated. Website. This past year, we budgeted six thousand, because that was for the construction of the new website that we had. Now that the website's up and running, really won't need that much to be there anymore, because it's really just maintenance and maybe some occasional posts if Meg has a question. But I mean, Meg, I think we're almost, pretty much self-sustaining for the most part, with the exception of getting it ready to accept online bill pay, it's probably the last thing hanging out there. So that's probably something we can reduce by a few thousand dollars this coming year. Justice, personal services. I view justice the same way I do as other elected officials. I don't think a raise there is viable option, but certainly it's a board decision. Justice clerk, that's our lead upstairs. I'm not going to talk specifics about employee salaries at this point, just because it's pretty early and that should be something that's really discussed in executive session. But something that the board does have to talk about, does have to consider is our raises for our non-union employees. Typically, the village has given raises in line with what our union employees are getting, because non-unions shouldn't really be punished for not being part of the union, in my opinion anyway. But we do have one expired police contract and TPW is coming due, where those negotiations will be starting up in the near future. So it's just something the board should be thinking about, what level of raises are appropriate for those non-union employees. Moving along, you have basically justice equipment, training, office supplies, you're going to see a lot of the maple wood. Departments have similar line items, office supplies, printing, telephone, things like that. I think that a lot of the department heads here are already running a pretty tight shift and not purchasing unnecessary things. And if you look at the reports that you get, that have how much is expended percentage-wise into the year, so you know, right now, we're probably about seventy-eight percent into the year. If you look at that, you can see where we are every year. And you'll see that generally with these line items, eighty percent of the year, they've pretty much spent eighty percent of that. And you know, they've been doing it for a while, so they know what to expect and things like that. Auditor, professional services. That's the accountant that comes in once a month and works with Sarah, also does some of our internal auditing, the justice audit this year. It's something where, you know, that's going to be a judgment call and something we'll talk more about, but it's really how many hours we want to allocate, professional CPA come in and work with department heads and things like that. That's also a line where if we were going to do an audit of all the books, just a full book audit, that would be a line item to put in there, which I think is something that is good for somebody to do. But one soup to nuts audit generally runs about thirty-five thousand dollars. So I thought to say it's not worth pursuing in the future, but just so everyone understands that. Treasurer budget, pretty much similar to the justice budget, office supplies, equipment, Any questions on this page? We got tax collector, office supplies, postage printing. We've got some more personnel costs, then looking at clerk, the same thing's pretty much there. Meg, just because you're here, is there anything you want to mention to the board about that budget?
No, anything specific?
Okay. Law contractual. This includes the favor of his retainer, but also any other miscellaneous thing, well, legal costs that aren't covered by his retainer. We are involved in litigation and David represents us above and beyond his contract, and that would come out of that line item. Engineer baseline. This is engineering work, typically done by Art Tolle, your tunnel work, that is outside of the scope of sewer and water. There's a different line item for that in sewer fund and water fund. As you can imagine, there's not a whole lot of engineering that takes place outside of those two funds, but occasionally stuff does happen. You know, the sidewalks surveying to make the sidewalk redish, that's an example of something that would come out of there.
Why are the numbers like twenty-ten and twenty-twelve so much higher than eleven or thirteen?
Engineer baseline.
The engineer baseline, almost forty in twenty-ten.
Is it here, maybe two thousand ten was CRV stuff? Not the data in front of me, I'd only be guessing. It's possible that things were classified differently then, or it might just be that there was other projects that were taking place that needed more review, that were outside of the scope of water and sewer. You know, things with roads and things like that, catch basins occasionally could be classified there. Meetings, that could have been a year where there was just more meetings than normal. You know, I try to only meet with the engineers when necessary, just because there's always, you know, a charge associated with that. Okay, so buildings, maple wood, cleaning, all of that stuff. I might have missed a line somewhere here, looking at this briefly, but there is a line for maple wood maintenance, maintaining this building. I believe this past year, we budgeted ten thousand for that, oh, maple wood maintenance repair, I'm sorry. We budgeted ten thousand this past year. Certainly, this building needs a lot of work consistently, so even though we want to try to save money as much as we can there, we, word by word, consider allocating more than ten thousand, potentially twenty thousand, just to really, you know, spend a little more now than spend even more down the line to maintain certain things.
What we have to do is a preference to.
Exactly. For those that joined us, we're doing a budget workshop right now. We're going through line by line, just talking about different items in the budget. We're still going to start the meeting at seven-thirty, right on time, regardless of where we are. Going through the next page, you can see our central garage items. Typically, most of these remain flat every year. Mike's pretty good about, you know, spending what's budgeted, not going over it unless there's something like Hurricane Irene or Lee or something like that. But for the most part, those are pretty much steady. Mike did mention to me that one of the trucks is going to need a new body. A lot of it can be salvaged, but just one major replacement part, he's looking at prices right now to make the ballpark for budgeting. And certainly, he's working to decide whether or not to go forward with that and budget for it, but Mike didn't make it clear that that was something that he was looking for. And he believes, again, it would be wiser to spend money now than spend more down the line, which I don't think. It's one of the trucks. At the bottom, central garage, you see an allocation of insurance. Insurance costs have gone up a little bit. We did have insurance last year, and bids did come in a little higher than what I'd like, but we made the lowest bid. But just for understanding purposes, our insurance costs will be up this upcoming year, based on, you know, the reactions, the numbers that we have. Judgments and claims and contingent account. In the past, we budgeted, there wasn't a lot budgeted in the past, last year, we budgeted a hundred fifteen thousand in contingency, because we knew there was a lot of tax surryries coming down the line. There are not as many right now that are working their way down the line, so I think that this next fiscal year will be less painful in terms of tax surryries. That being said, we still do want to be prepared in case things do come in. So it's one of those things where, you know, you don't fund accordingly, you end up having to take more out of the fund balance, that's something that we all want to do. Payroll tax, MTA payroll tax, it's just good to note that that is still in there alive and well. They took out a lot of portions of that law in the state, but that law is still in the books and still a tax of the government, so even though a lot of businesses aren't paying that out directly, it's still there and we are paying, and businesses in the village are paying payroll tax, vis a vis their tax bill. Any questions before I turn the page? Bottom, you have, see those, the police line items that correlates to grants that were in the revenue side. And those years where you see spaces, that just means that those are years where either the grants weren't available, or the village didn't pursue those police programs. For budget purposes, it's all important, also important to know that when we do have those grants, a lot of times, the village has to spend the money first and then get reimbursed. So it's one of those things where in a tight fiscal year, not knowing whether that money will come in, a lot of times, the village may have potentially held off on making those purchases. Moving along. Police budget, some of them on page four of eight. Again, personnel things here, a lot of those are going to be dictated by contract negotiations, but you see police cars. In the past, the village has budgeted for a car almost every year. Last year, we did not get a car, or budget for a car rather, that's a decision the board is going to have to make. I believe that in the chief's projections, he had requested another car, but at thirty-five thousand, it's potentially challenging, but I'll let Adam speak to that, and I know that's going to be with the chief. Just a note, in the middle of police, you see police electric. If you go down the years, you'll see that our cost this year was about three thousand dollars less than our cost in two thousand and ten, as a result of being on our electric cost, we had a third-party energy supplier, and those savings are pretty much in line across the board with all our electric costs, it's sewer, water, main street lighting, et cetera. Just to note, police ammunition. But I asked myself, and I'm sure some of you are wondering, why are we budgeting so much for ammunition? I don't think one of our police officers has fired a gun in years. That's for training at the range. Two times a year, there's training and activities that take place at the range, so that's what that money is budgeted for. Had anything else police you wanted to mention?
No, I feel like we were giving over some stuff. We'll tell you, ammunition's going to go off the lot this year, just because of the cost of ammunition, that's not a tremendous one.
Because of the demand. All right, any questions before we turn the page? Moving along to five. They've got some more police items, and those are pretty much all going to be flat. Clothing allotment, that's based on the contract. Again, there's some costs for using the training range. And we have safety inspection, that's the building inspector. Personnel services, again, that's a non-union position that will be grouped with the other non-union positions, and we have that discussion. Auto maintenance, office supplies, again, pretty standard things that have been flat the next few years, and I think we can keep those flat. Regular vital stats, again, really just office supplies and salary. Then you have street maintenance, you have the contractual salaries there, the CSEA. Overtime, if you want to just take a note, the street maintenance overtime went from eighty-five thousand in two thousand and ten to ninety-five thousand in two thousand and eleven, but in two thousand and twelve, we were able to basically cut that in half. And this past year, we budgeted sixty-five, I believe that we're going to come in under that. And again, it's one of those things, you never know what the winter's going to bring in terms of snow. You have a really harsh winter, and you're going to eat up a lot of your DPW overtime, that's just the nature of the beast, but it's about making the best conservative guess there. My guess is we could probably save about five thousand by decreasing that line item. Again, means street equipment. You see in two thousand and eleven, I believe that was a truck that was purchased, and had been accrued, the funds have been accrued over a few years, but since then, we've held that line pretty well. Catch basement repairs, pretty standard things, all those are going to be staying flat. We'll turn the page. Again, more street maintenance stuff, things like radios, and a lot of these are contractual, where every year, we pay a certain amount for maintenance, things like that. Clothing allotment and other contractual obligation. Street count, well, paving, you'll see that's eighty thousand dollars, again, that's the grant that we get from the state every year, so we allocate eighty there, but again, that's coming out, the grant that we get from the state, so it's not coming out of the general fund, taxpayer cost anyway. And then there's microseal, which in two thousand and eleven, we had budgeted almost seventy thousand for microsealing. In order to comply with the tax cap, we've been helping hold it off on most of the microsealing the past few years. I haven't talked to Mike, and he thinks that it's time that we, there's areas that need it, as far as I know, there's no areas that are in dramatic need of microsealing, but there's definitely roads that need paving. West Main Street and Montgomery Street come to mind, among others. So the board, we do have the option, if we wanted to go above and beyond that eighty thousand dollars, we could budget more money from the general fund, but that wouldn't come out of the grant that we get from the state. Snow removal salt, again, that's really a function of how the winter is. Last year, we had a mild winter, it was only twelve thousand. The year before that, it was forty-three thousand. So it really kind of ebbs and flows based on the weather pattern. Thirty thousand dollars is what we have budgeted for this year, I think we'll be under that, which is a good thing, but as you can see with the two bad years, when it's over forty, this is good year doesn't mean we can really budget that way moving forward. And then we have the senior center, the amount that we contribute every year, and that's really funded with the town. Then you have zoning, personal services, planning, members, education, things like that, again, small line items, things that will probably stay flat. Moving along. We have our plan, our expense, that's something that we can look at. In two thousand and ten, it was twenty-four thousand, we found that down to ten thousand, so I believe we're probably right where we should be there. Refuse and garbage, again, this is, I just want to take a note here, our dumping fees, the amount we pay every year, has been probably about, pretty average at a hundred eighty thousand every year, with the new recycling program that we're going to be starting this year, with the settlement with the state. I believe that we're going to be able to get that down through increased use of recycling, through giving people supplies for it, and also the education. And then you have repairs to the truck in there, pretty standard. And then if you go down, we're really going to see the biggest drivers of where increases are going to come from. You have your state and police retirement, and just going through and looking at these increases that we recruit over the years, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, state retirement went up seventy thousand dollars. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, it went up seventy thousand dollars. And this past year, it wasn't as bad of a year, it only increased thirty this previous year, but there's, you know, we'll have to see what happens next year. That's budget, school districts, everyone is really feeling the pain there. Then again, with fire, police retirement, in two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, and again, this is a cost we can't control, that amount went up by over a hundred thousand dollars in one year. From two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, it went up almost ninety thousand dollars. And again, those are the costs that we can't control, so we're trying to find money to cut in the budget. It's really only be able to control a certain amount of drivers in the budget. Workers' comp, again, that's something that is out of our hands, we just have to do our best to make sure employees are working in a safe manner, following proper protocol. And that's pretty much it. We have some bans for sleaze and things like that, that have already been done and paid for, and that's pretty much it. I think it's probably right around seven-thirty, seven-twenty-seven. Does anyone have any questions or anything? All right, so that's that. I'm going to be meeting with department heads next few days, I've already met with some of them, and Sarah and I have been talking. That's that. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone tonight. We were just doing some budget preparation for our budget this year. David, it's about three minutes or two, can we start now, because we advertised, we're having the budget workshop?
No.
Okay.
I mean, seven-thirty is where you're meeting, that's what it's advertising.
Okay. So we have to wait about two more minutes until seven-thirty, folks, and we'll get started, but it's very nice to see everyone. If anyone wants an agenda, there's some on the table up here. Welcome. Yes. All right, let's start it, everyone. Good evening. I may ask for it on the rise, some of the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask our engineer, Art Tolle, to lead us in the pledge tonight. Welcome back, Art.
Thank you very much. To the pledge of allegiance, allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, welcome to me, everyone. Wonderful to see so many people here tonight for our March eleventh village board meeting. First, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
First item, which I'm sure a number of people are here for, is the continuation of public hearing for signage regulations. Just to bring everyone up to speed, it wasn't the last meeting, we had a public hearing on some changes towards signage law. A few weeks back, we had some great public comment from there, and there was also a part of the law that as printed, the village wants to actually change. So what we were advised to do is keep the public hearing open for a few weeks to see if any new comments came in, so that's what we did. And then, at least my plan anyway, and I think the way we left it off, take any comments tonight, close the public hearing, take those comments, the changes that we would like to make to the law, put together a new law, and then put that out for public consumption and feedback, and schedule a new public hearing with the new law as proposed. And I mentioned this last time, but again, the public law as presented, local law rather, not public law, is presented as one thing that's definitely going to be changed. While the village is open to allowing internally illuminated signs in certain areas, the village does not want to allow that in the architectural design district, and does not want to allow internally illuminated signs in any residential districts. So essentially, the internally illuminated signs have passed as the board, as expressed in the past, would just be in the CS districts and industrial districts. So outside of the central village corridor, the historical district in the village, there would not be internally illuminated signs. Since then, we received an email from a resident with some thoughts, and we also received written comments from the planning board. One of the things the planning board has recommended is if we, the areas that we allow internally illuminated lights, to not allow blinking lights, and I think that that's a good idea, and that's something that we're going to integrate into new law. David, do you remember offhand the other two key points the planning board had mentioned?
Not offhand, but I could certainly. Limitation on hours of the, lighting of signs to be indirectly illuminated, the hours in the ADD. So you're allowed indirectly illuminated, so they want to limit the hours. And they want us to consider, or they don't want me to do anything, they want you to consider prohibiting any exposed bulb neon signs to exceed six square feet.
Okay. Great, so just so everyone here is aware, those are the recommendations of the planning board, and I think they're all very good ones. So at that, I'm going to ask for a motion, do we need a motion to open up the public hearing, or since it's still open?
It's still open, that's correct. It was adjourned to tonight, so it's still open, so you can say comment at this time.
Okay. So again, just keep me in mind, the village is not allowing internally illuminated signs in the architectural design district, so, I know we said it last time, but if you had just seen the local law, you might have read otherwise, so I'm here to assure everyone here that's not going to happen. That, any public comment? Feel free, just ask, just take a name for the record. An address. Yes?
Maureen Quatrain, twenty-six Giff Road, Ocean, New York. Any concern about the armature signs, Kyle? Are there going to be some sort of limitations on size and, just so that there's some sort of uniformity, that one person may not have, you know, a four-and-a-half-foot sign and someone else something twice as large, or whatever, similar to what you've done in other areas?
Sure.
Where this is the sign, it's going on this size building, and this would be your square footage. Has anything like that been talked about or put together yet?
The only suggestion we got was the one from, I believe it was Mr. Rooney last time, about the height, about not allowing it below a certain height. I think that makes sense.
Sure.
I mean, I think that our approach to the overhang signs is the same approach that we have to the rest of the signage, in that, you know, we want to regulate things, but not over-regulate. So I think that having some general guidelines in there, the way we do with everything else, I think makes sense, and that's something that I would be receptive to.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Yes?
Hi. Thomas Messer Tony, business owner, downtown Goshen. I'm a little concerned about outside the historic district. Other towns like Warwick were able to develop a commercial center with the existing codes, and they were very successful. The new shopping plaza with the auto zone, stop and shop, uses indirect lighting, overhead lighting, just so there's no difference in, you know, in the overall area, where when you compare it to a downtown as to a new shopping area. Is this something that the board could consider, if we can try to keep the existing charm of the area? Because it is the entrance into the town, and what's going to happen eventually, the signs are going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're going to lose control. So it's something we can consider, maybe if they could just fit in, like we had to fit in, it may work better for the whole town and the village.
Thank you. I mean, I think, to answer your question, I think this board is open to consider everything. You know, it's not one of those things, nothing's a fait accompli, we don't have our minds made up. But really, the argument in favor of allowing the internally illuminated outside of the EDD is in that CS corridor, they're already there. And the ZVA has given these variances, and there are at least half a dozen businesses that have these already on that corridor. Because I guess the ZVA felt because it was removed from the downtown and it was separated over there, that it makes more sense. So we're at a point where we have a significant number of businesses that had them already, so it's really just about bringing our code up to speed of what's already, the facts on the ground, if you will. And you could make the argument that, you know, leave it in the hands of the ZVA, but I think just legally, it's a slippery slope, about all these businesses have been allowed, then at a certain point, one business isn't allowed, and they're going to make the case why, and open us up to litigation, and really, you know, we want to be consistent, but also fair. So I think it's a good point, and again, the board's mind isn't made up, we're, we still are looking at comments, that's why we're, you know, here tonight.
It might be, you know, maybe it could be a press study, you guys can go and take a look at how it operates, but at night, it does, it does look nice, it looks like it fits in with the rest of the village.
You're saying it worked?
It worked, yes.
Okay. Sure? I don't know about that.
It works great. I mean, you have a huge shopping center, and everything is kind of subdued, not loud, not taking over, and it might be something to take a look at.
Sure. I'm hoping to look at any. Thank you very much. Any other comments in the public? Yes, Mr. Connor?
Hey, Connor. I just happened to have the Village of Warwick sign regulations, that I printed out copies for all of you. I'm not promoting that we adopt all of them, but I think they're worth taking a look at and seeing how they differ from ours. A couple of things that really jump out is that they are, every new sign is required to go before the planning board and also their architectural review board. All interior illuminated signs are prohibited anywhere in the village. Any alterations to signs go before the code enforcement officer. And what else did I have over here? Oh, here's, I don't know if our ordinance, Dave can probably tell us this. For all signs that the applicant is not the owner of the property in which the sign is to be located, written permission from the property owner is required. I don't know if our ordinance says that.
It may not say that, but we have, if they come to the planning board, obviously, they need an owner's endorsement for an application. What Ted does in the village department, I'm not aware, but I would assume that he gets an owner's authorization, although I don't know that for sure.
We should make sure that's somewhere. I don't know if we're going to get to prohibited signs if you want to. Oh, animated signs. You mentioned something about electronic signs?
I, I think the planning board. The planning board, correct.
Well, in the Warwick regs, it's animated signs. Any sign manifesting kinetic or illusionary motion caused by natural, mechanical, manual, electrical, or other means, except signs displaying time or temperature, are prohibited.
I think that's criminal arts as well right now.
I don't know if it mentioned anything about moving signs. I'm not sure.
I think there's one of the criminal lines it does. I'll double check.
All right, please, if I should look at this. Any flashing signs, and then all internally illuminated signs, and that's about. That's about it. And signs incorporating projected images, which I don't think we do. And that's, I don't know if you're familiar, that kind of technology, where they can project signs on the sides of buildings through a projector, or, I don't think our ordinance mentions that.
I doubt it.
It's something that we should take into consideration.
Sure. And we'll land this whole thing to the...
And then, I mean, they conclude, sign design should be compatible with architectural character of the building on which it is placed, and shall not cover any architectural features on the wall. I don't know if we're that specific in our ordinance to this. Okay. I think there was, we're taking a reading, you know.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much. And just one thing, I just, my thoughts, and I think this is all, there's probably a lot of good stuff in here we can use, and I think Warwick's a model for a lot of things in this county. One just distinction that I see between Village of Goshen and Village of Warwick is Warwick's kind of set out, and it's separated from a lot of the other centers of industry. I think a challenge in our businesses downtown base is that those businesses have competitors five minutes down the road in the mall, and fifteen minutes down the road in the convents, whereas Warwick gets a little more separated. So I just think that shouldn't guide all of our decision making, but it's just something that I, you know, bear in mind as well. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Mark?
Mr. Reddick? And Mr. Donnich?
Head Corley, 91 Murray Avenue. I went through the regulations, and I was glad to hear that the internally illuminated signs will not be allowed in architectural design districts regardless of the zone. That was my main concern. The other item was the overhanging signs. I think that you've gone over some of the concerns about that, that they might fall, that you're actually allowing signs on your own property, on town, village property, and that they aren't on the property of the owners. I think there should be concern about the height. I would suggest eight foot limit on signs, so that that would allow, certainly, eight foot is about the height of the average house ceiling, so that would be common for people, and then it would all be somewhat limited. The comment was weighed about the size of those signs. I noticed that the size of the sign on a building was, it expanded from twelve to fifteen feet, which I think is fine, I don't think that's overly large. I think most of the sign regulations are pretty well controlled. I was concerned about the fact that under the new sign regulations that we've been developing for communities, now we're getting into dark sky, light limits, and that should be, some reference to that in the code, as well as the...
What is the dark sky limit? Just how bright a sign can be?
There are, I will get you copies of those...
Okay.
...regulations and references, but that's talking about light shining up. For example, I guess one of the worst offenders we have is our historic lights. They're all different. And this is something that now that we have, we're thirty, it's thirty years after we started putting those lights in, if we could develop a style of light where the light is actually fixed in the top of the fixture, and you don't have the glass on top, you have a metal, so that the light shines down onto the ground and not up into the sky.
Okay.
And doesn't shine in your eyes. If you go over toward Kelly Jean's in that area there, you see some good signs, lights, and some poor lights. And I think you can check yourself and see which are the best, and I would recommend that. Also concerned about some of the lighting in front of the beverage store, about a year or two ago, when those lights went in, they were far in excess of what should be allowed. And I think that where you have lighting for gas stations and places like that, what we've done in my commentary is to require that the lighting be recessed, so that the light shines down in the area, that you don't have the fixtures dropping down...
Sure.
So that cars driving along are looking right at the bulb. So you can just recess the whole thing...
Okay.
...on the flat lamps. And those are my recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there going to be a new regulation, since there are a lot of changes?
Yes, yeah, we're going to make the change about the ADD, integrate some of the planning board's recommendations, potentially integrate things here tonight or at last public hearing, and it'll be a new local law put out for public consumption and a new public hearing.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Other comments?
Just briefly, I won't beat a dead horse, you all know how I feel about regulating this area in general. I would just urge you all to chew on what the real achieved net effect is going to be by endorsing these. They sound interesting, but my concern is for the economic and fiscal viability of the community. The Sunoco sign down at Tony Pizzano Station could not be put back up if it's taken down for service, because it's internally illuminated. Where Napa now is, used to be Grand Union, there's a sign in front now that is derelict, because it cannot be refurbished, revitalized, and meet our code. It was internally illuminated with fluorescents. These days, you probably have LEDs or another source. Nonetheless, it was internally illuminated. And we functioned fine as a community with a commercial enterprise there, and it wasn't detrimental to the look and feel, or the economic viability of the community. With regard to signs timed at night, most businesses do shut down. I don't see it as an issue. In point of fact, our streets kind of tend to roll up after about six o'clock or so. But there are businesses that stay open. Around West Main Street, there's some, there are some eateries. Again, I ask the question, what are you going to accomplish? And what is the net gain against what the advantage might be of allowing those signs to stay illuminated until the business closes out? Those people who are going to be not out are not going to experience those signs, and they're in a CS zone, not in a residential district. So, again, that's what your CS zone is for. Without a CS zone, you don't have fiscal viability as a municipal government, you don't have economic viability as a community.
Thank you very much. Any other comments in the public? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Again, to be clear, we're going to be making changes to the law, putting it out, putting a new one out publicly, so this is not the end, this is really just the middle, so to speak. But I really appreciate everyone's comments, and I think this is a, it's a major issue, and I'm glad that there's here people with feedback, because, you know, the downtown, I mean, that's our identity, and the downtown and the rest of the village, all this is very important to that, and I think we're going to have a really nice final product that's going to satisfy, maintain the character of the village, and also give our businesses an ability to promote themselves. And I'm excited about this, and I hope you all join us once we announce the next public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
And a second?
No.
Any board member comments before we do so? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along to minutes, we have the Village Board minutes of the February 25th meeting. Any errors or omissions? Hearing nonetheless for motion to approve?
No move.
Second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have the Village Board Work Session from March 4th, 2013. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Communications, we have a letter from Orange County System of Care. Two of a concern after Speaker Mike Strobel, Village Clerk, this morning, the Orange County System of Care, together with Voices United for Change, would like to respectfully request permission to use the park area at the corner of St. James Place and Green Street of Village of Goshen, to begin and end our second annual 5K Children's Mental Health Awareness Walk on Heritage Trail, May 4th, 2013, from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have obtained the necessary permit from Orange County Parks and Recreation Department to use Heritage Trail. We would like permission from the board to begin and end the walk in Village of Goshen. Details of the awareness walk, we expect approximately a hundred walkers/riders. We will be setting up a ten by ten pop of ten with folding table for registration. We will be handing out information on children's mental health services in Orange County. Participants will receive items upon completion of walks, which is water bottles and healthy snacks. There's no charge to walk, but donations will be gratefully accepted to benefit Voices for Change United. We will provide a certificate of insurance to the village. We will not be cooking or have any physical activities such as bouncy house or climbing wall. We will police the area of all garbage or move from premises if required. And the chief has a note, he has spoken with Susan O'Boyle, and the patrols will monitor South Street crossing during, I can't read that word. They will forward a copy of permit and...
County permit.
County permit. The chief's okay with it. Sounds like a nice event, and it's not going to accrue any additional overtime, because we'll be able to patrol that with our people on staff. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like a nice event, it'll bring people to downtown and into the community. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, items of business? We have to schedule a public hearing on our 2013-2014 budget. Earlier tonight, for those who came in, the Village Board had our first workshop on the budget, talking about various line items and some plus projections. The Village Board of Village of Goshen will hereby schedule the public hearing on the proposed 2013-2014 budget of April 8th, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. or soon after may be heard. Can I have a motion on this?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Meg, I think we, we talked about having the preliminary done by Monday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the preliminary budget will be available a week from today, if people are interested in taking a look at that prior to the hearing. All right, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have confined space awareness training. Manuel Orelena and Michael Sullivan are hereby authorized to attend the New York WBA Seminar on Confined Space Awareness, April 8th, at Walco Golf Course in Walco, New York. It is understood the total cost of this training will be eighty dollars. Can I have a motion on this?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's always nice when they find training close by, so there's not large costs associated with it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, some more training. Manuel Orelena, Manuel Orelena Senior, Ryan Richings, and Michael Sullivan are hereby authorized to attend the Hudson Valley Water Works Seminar, to be held March 21st, 2013, at the Village of Montgomery Senior Center. The total cost of the seminar is a hundred twenty dollars, and participants are in 5.5 contact hours towards water certificates, and 5.5 hour contract hours towards waste water certificates. Can I have a motion on this?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And last item of business, we have the garbage contract with the school. This is up for a vote tonight, but I just want the trustees to see the changes that Damon had come up with, to satisfy some of the trustee concerns. If you go down to item number three on here, and just for public knows, this is our agreement that we have with the Goshen School District. We pick up the school's garbage every year, and they give us a check. That money that we get from the school district goes into a fund, and that helps us purchase a garbage truck every few years. We had a discussion on this a few meetings back, and there was a line in here that the board wanted some tightening, about what happens if our tipping fees go up, the actual mechanism for increasing the cost of the district if our costs go up. So a tipping clause, it is understood and agreed that the fee for the service is predicated upon tipping fees at Orange County Transfer Station, more nor than recycling waste management, being eighty dollars per ton. If the tipping fee incurred by the village should increase by more than five percent during the terms of this agreement, the fee for pickup set forth in paragraph two shall be adjusted upward by an amount equal to the increased tipping fee charged to the village. Any thoughts or discussion on that, trustees?
I think that's kind of what we were looking for, was to safeguard that, and it's still for the same period of time?
This will be the three years, yep. We approved it one year just for their budgeting purposes, but this would overrule that and be a pre-约定 contract.
And, I mean, have we had any discussion with the school about it?
I sent this over then today. I'm sure they're going to have their lawyer review it, just to make sure they're okay with that. I don't see it being an issue, it's very reasonable. But I'm not going to vote on it tonight, because I want to get feedback from them before we actually vote on it. Any other discussion?
Well, in the past, it hasn't changed...
No.
...anywhere near five percent.
No, this agreement's been in place for ten years or more, so... Yes, I don't see any swings of more than five percent, or even any at all, because it's been consistent the past few years. But I think it's good to have language in there to protect us financially. Any discussion on this? Okay, we're going to go to mayor trustee comments, certainly trustee Green.
No water report today. I think anybody that was in attendance yesterday at the parade speaks volumes to our service personnel, our police, police officers, our village residents, businesses, it's just a whole run. And I think any doubt of where that parade should be was settled yesterday, so, probably not.
Thank you, trustee Stewart?
Very brief, obviously, there was another small storm, and we did what we usually do in that happenstance, and our guys, the department, everybody else involved, the cleanup involved, and it was done expeditiously, but all of this.
Thank you. Trustee Chard?
I was going to echo what trustee Brain said, I mean, I saw thirty thousand people having a great time in Goshen yesterday, that's what I saw. I see a lot of people nodding their heads yes about that, so, I know I had a great time with you and the Rory, and we all had a really nice time, so...
That's it. Thank you. Trustee Smith?
Yeah, I would just echo the same thing. Now, we did, we have a significant crowd of people here yesterday. It turned out well, there was no incident of any sort that happened. And then, this morning, the village looked the same as it did before the parade. And, you know, that didn't come effortlessly, it came, you know, at the hands of the DPW, and of course, we didn't have any incidents, any incidents, and that comes at the hand of the police department. So, they did a great job in working with the parade committee, along with the sheriff's department, the town police and everything, and the fire police in particular, of making the whole thing happen. And I think it was a great thing for the community.
Thank you. And for my reports sewerwise, our crews have been assisting the contractor who continues to TV the sewer lines, help us with our infrastructure improvement study. And again, it's been sad, but yesterday was phenomenal. Thank you so much, everyone that helped the parade committee, it's just a phenomenal organization, they do such a great job. Our police, department of public, fire department, ambulance corps, and the fire police, I really can't stress that enough, I mean, they're a volunteer, and the fire police manning certain corners, including trustee Stewart here, saves the village a significant amount of money in overtime. And we have an agreement now with the parade committee, where overtime that's accrued by the village for police and DPW overtime, is a large portion that is paid by the, for the parade committee. Because as you can tell, with thirty thousand people in the village, and a village of only five thousand, certainly a lot of other people were benefiting from our infrastructure and our resources, so I think it is fair for us to get a contribution, but it's such a great thing for the community. So, with that, I'm going to open up to citizen comments. I'm going to start with the Goshen Economic Medical Council, because I know they have reached out, wanted to address some things tonight. So I'll open up to you guys first, just because I know they have a good amount of your members here. And if you'd be coming up or speaking back there, whatever you prefer.
Okay, I'm Steve Pytham from the Goshen Methodist Church, this is Reverend Bolton from the, from the John's, A U M P Church. This is Reverend Lemon from the Episcopal Church, and Reverend Wardstein from the Jevad, Synagogue here. Thank you for hearing us. We came before you over a year ago, and expressed the desire to talk about possibly renaming a street, a section of a street in Goshen after Dr. Reverend Morton the King Jr., as a symbol in the county center of his work and what he stood for. And you were very receptive, and we appreciate that. And we're back to a suggested street. We have unanimously decided to suggest to you that we think about having a dual name or renaming Park Place, the street that runs from South Church to the Main Street for Reverend Dr. King. It's, has monuments on both ends that kind of symbolize a good section of history of its country, from revolution to the Civil War, and that kind of has the symbolic significance. And it's a small street without too many things on it, and we just thought it would be a good, a good street to have a dual signage or to rename for Dr. King as a, as a symbol for the county center, and a symbol of his work and our belief in it. the county center and a symbol of his work and our belief in it. So we're suggesting Park Place.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all the work, I know you guys have been meeting on this and spending a lot of time, and you have a passion for this, and I think the board was receptive then and were receptive now. The thing that I'll say first is, you know, the number one thing we don't want to do is inconvenience or disrupt business for businesses that might be on the road to legally change an address. So I think the first thing is really to find out how those business owners and residents that might live on Park Place or do business on Park Place, if they're receptive or not. And I don't think anyone would be opposed to the concept, but in terms of changing stationary letterhead and all that stuff, I don't know what people would say. So I think the first step, and this is something that I'd be happy to work jointly with the council on, is engaging those businesses, business owners, finding out their thoughts are, and if they think that might disrupt their business, then as you mentioned, start with potentially a joint meeting with, you know, Heart of the King Street Boulevard being kind of a survey or nickname for the street, and over years, organically get that to be more and more known and recognized, that potentially makes people change down the line. Certainly, if every business owner says, I'm finally gonna do it tomorrow, that's fine by us. And I just spoke without disclosing the board, I'm not sure if anyone has any other thoughts or comments?
Well, I would just say that having lived here for my entire life, it's difficult when you look at certain streets, I mean, there are streets like Wisner and some of these others in Wickham that were named for people that were very famous in the history of the village, plus they're very long streets. And that street, I think, is really, a really excellent choice. I mean, we're talking about businesses, but in reality, when you look at it, I think it really picked a really good street, because it's right in the center, the heart of the community, you've got the monuments at both ends, and there really aren't, I mean, first of all, you have the surrogates court, and you have the old, what I think of as the Goshen Hotel, you know, the Goshen Inn, and there's a law office, and of course, the Presbyterian Church has an address there as well, but really, it isn't that much there to impact, and I think it's really a pretty street, and quite in the heart of the village, so I'm very much in favor of that.
I mean, I think you nailed it with the street and all the historical ties, not even concerned, but I don't know what courthouse, that would be the only, I'm sure there'd be an animal.
I think it's optimal courthouse there, because that's what Dr. King stood for.
No.
For democracy and, you know, for law.
Well, I think...
Well, it's practical, it's practical too, but, you know, it was important to him, you know, for democracy, and people get there, they're right under law. Kind of like wavelengths with the Supreme Court.
Yep, right.
And many of these things, they're there that way, so, great choice.
So I think you've heard from the board, I think we're receptive. The question now is just moving forward, what logistics do we have to work out, so maybe myself can be with, you know, representatives from the council later this week or next week, to figure out who's gonna reach out to, to really figure that out. So I'd say let's talk in the next day or so, map out a schedule, and that's it. Any other board member comments, Ray?
Dave, what would, what would it legally take to do this?
Well, there's a process to go through, which I had not memorized, so I will report back and forth. But I mean, the Village Board gets to name the streets.
Okay.
And not too long ago, the whole county went through with the 911 situation, where certain street names had to be renamed because they were in conflict with other street names. So there's a process to go through, it's not too terribly complicated, but I don't have the commitment.
Well, this dual, what we started out with that, I noticed that there's a lot of places in the metropolitan area where they've named streets after people that were killed in Iraq or Afghanistan.
Yeah, my, yeah...
And they've made it a dual thing, where it's 44th Street.
I'm gonna assume that that process is easier, that's why, but more frequent.
Okay.
But certainly, I'll look into both, and it's not too terrible.
Because what I'm concerned is if we're gonna do it, I wouldn't want these gentlemen to have to come back the same time next year and discuss it again. I'd just like to do it, you know?
Sure. All right, so let's talk in the next few days, folks. Thank you very much.
Any other citizen comments tonight? Yep?
I'd just like to bolster what you had just mentioned about the dual name of the street. And a particular street that comes to mind is Martin Luther King Boulevard in New York City in Harlem, which is 125th Street. Bill says 125th Street, also says Martin Luther King Boulevard. And so you don't necessarily need to retire the name of the old street, or if you want to, it could be a sunset that may take 10 or 20 years. So I don't, I can't imagine that it's gonna be a conflict for addresses that are on that particular street, because they could still maintain the old name. Personally, I always get Parkway and Park Place mixed up, whenever I have a conversation with anybody, and it's on the front side of the track, the backside of the track, so that already confuses me. So I'm, I'm, so yeah, I'm advocating for the name of the street, and I think I would hope that the village could expedite the matter, be done with it.
That's...
I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
I agree. I have seen the blue signs, I mean, that are the dual thing, and I think there's actually an argument that maybe Park Place should stay on there, that, I think most villages and cities have a Park Place, it's prime real estate, and I think the honor and of recognizing that street as being Dr. Luther Martin Luther King Boulevard, you get Park Place, it's kind of a good dual thing.
Old street.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, so maybe there's an argument that doing it that way, either way, either if it is legally easy to push through.
I think we'll go with another weekend.
I agree, it's better than Baltic.
Any areas?
Yes. Lisa, of course?
Sorry, Lisa?
Good, there we go.
I bought my Girl Scout cookies already.
Yes.
My daughter, you don't even know. I was trying to buy, it's only half full now.
I am here representing the Goshen and Sarwell Service Unit, and the Service Unit Manager for our Goshen Girl Scouts, who had so much fun at the parade yesterday, by the way, it was great. We are requesting, and I've put a request into Meg, to have a campery at the Slesian Park. And I've given you the dates, time, an overview... ...of the Goshen Fire, had we signed off on that? I have verbal approval from the Fire Chiefs, and I also spoke with Chief Watt today, and I know that security was an issue for some of the parents, you got a bunch of girls, you know, kind of out there, and Chief Watt says that it would be no problem, he will have officers, police throughout, and you can even have, you know, they can come out and walk around a little bit and just kind of check up on that. So that was fine. What else do I have here? All of the leaders are required to complete Girl Scout mandated training, so they cannot be out there with the girls if they have not done the official Girl Scout training. So we have that. We also have guidelines for safety ratios, adults to children, so we will have that covered and them some. So the Girl Scout says that we need one adult for five kids, we'll have two adults for five kids, just to cover the safety. Who knows? We are also gonna seek approval from the county executive's office to use the government center parking, because there's not a lot of parking over there, so we will have people come in, drop off their camping gear, and then bring it over to the government center, and they can just leave their cars there overnight. So I have to call tomorrow, Chief Watt actually leaving the name of somebody to ask for, so I have a contact, and we're gonna look to go back for first name coverage.
How many girls?
We are gonna cap on, I think, 120 is what we decided. The acceptable level is gonna go like that. Goshen has never done anything like this, so we figured, hey, why not? And I like to plan stuff, so...
I think it sounds awesome.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, as a scout myself, who camped out by the Goshen reservoir a few times, you know, it's definitely a great experience for the kids, and it sounds like from a supervision perspective, you guys are above and beyond what's necessary.
Oh, yeah.
And we're always looking to get more activity at Slesian, and I think this would be a great way to kind of show it off and bring more people in, and I think it's great. I mean, I think there's certain things we have to look into, just the buyer stuff and conversations, I'd like, I would change and all that.
Absolutely, yeah.
You don't need an approval tonight, right, for your planning purposes?
Uh, no, I mean, we're gonna start planning...
Yeah.
...with our fingers crossed and just kind of roll with it. But my contact info is here, I'm upstairs, Monday's a Wednesday, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, in my opinion, and speaking more for myself, I think it's a no-brainer, I think it sounds like a great time. I just wanna figure out the insurance things and...
Yeah, well, it is, the different insurance, Girl Scout has the blanket one, so Meg has copied that, and she has the application as well. So anything else, just let me know.
I think you probably were, we did have the one issue, we've got the school building there that we needed to cut away from that.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
How is that coincide with Great American Weekend, because it's like two days before Great American Weekend?
The weekend before.
That's the sixth we've had it this year.
Yeah, no, we double-checked all that, and sure enough, that day was going on that weekend.
Lisa, where are you planning on putting the tents and stuff in circles?
Right in the oval, yeah.
You just have the library, they own some of that land, just to make sure...
Yeah, it's south.
And we talked about parking, I thought that it was...
Yeah, when we talked about the baseball field in there, that where the outfield would be of a baseball field is a sliver of library land. They seem, most of the time, they're reasonable when there's a crossover event.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's a problem, it just makes me not just...
No problem, I was like, my head...
Yeah, campfires do the different part, maybe.
Yeah, we're doing the part over, my pond.
There should be enough real estate regardless if there need be to do it without.
I don't think they'll give you a hard time just...
Yeah, I don't think so.
But it's necessary, we have a survey of the property as well, so if it comes down to being that precise, we can show you where the problems are.
I don't know, just a problem with them, I think just...
Yeah, no, I think it's a great point, yeah, thank you.
I think this is cool, because the last time there was an overnight campout in a villager town in Goshen Park was when I was the director of Goshen Day Camp, and I led the last campout at Cradle Park.
Oh, okay.
Why was it the last one, Kyle?
No, you know, we had it, and then the next year it rained, and... Yeah, so, I mean, chances are, we'll get all these things ironed out, our next public meeting, this will be on the agenda for approval.
Okay.
You know where to get me, I know how to get in touch with you.
Yeah.
No, it's exciting.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments tonight? Joe?
Two quick things. The contract with the school, could you post that up online? And two, could you please post the preliminary budget at the earliest possible?
By Monday, when it's ready, it'll be up. I don't think it'll be up before Monday, because Monday is the day I, that's my thought that they...
Well, if I'm saying it to the web, it's...
Yeah, it'll be up, especially because we have the preliminary budget here, and we want the public to have had as long a time as possible, look at it and make, you know...
Just tangential to that, whenever you have letters or any sort of documents relative to a meeting, it would be helpful if all of them could go up online with the meeting documents. They don't always make it to the web, and it would be very helpful if they could. And perhaps get that organized on the web, broken down by meeting date, instead of just all thrown into a heap by month, because it's very hard to break documents down to particular meetings after the fact.
Okay. Any other citizen comments tonight? All right, well, thank you very much for coming, everybody. I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody, have a good night.